Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. If anybody has electronic devices, could you please turn them off? We appreciate it. Thank you very much and welcome. I'm going to call meeting to order. And could I have a closed meeting report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier this evening, council met in closed session as permitted pursuant to two sections of the municipal act, first section being Section 239-2B. Under that section, council this evening received information concerning -- received information concerning ongoing and provided direction concerning ongoing human resource matters. And council further adopted the minutes of the January 23rd and January 24th respective closed meetings of -- closed meeting minutes of council and the personnel committee, which meetings were also both held in closed section under the same section. Secondly, council also met this evening in closed session pursuant to Section 239-2C. Under that section, council received an update concerning a pending disposition of municipal property. Discussion ensued and council provided direction to administration to finalize the proposed disposition of municipal property. And that's the extent of my closed meeting report. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Rob. Is there any conflict of interest here tonight amongst council members? Seeing none, adoption of the published agenda. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Garan, all in favor? It's Kerry, and we'll move into adoption minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 5.1, that the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 14th, 2019 be adopted as circulated?
Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bowman and Counselor Vanadell. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
5.2, that the minutes of the January 23rd, 2019 special council meeting be adopted as circulated?
Mover, Deputy Mayor Malash, seconder. Counselor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor? Thank you. It's Kerry.
5.3, that the minutes of the January 21st, 2019 special council meeting be adopted as circulated?
Counselor Bowman, seconder, Counselor Bjorkman, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's Kerry. Thank you.
5.4, that the minutes of the special council meeting held January 14th be adopted as circulated?
Mover, Counselor Bjorkman. Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's Kerry.
And 5.5, that the minutes of the special council meeting of December 10th, 2018 be adopted as circulated?
Counselor Garan and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions on this one? All in favor? Thank you. And we'll move right into the public presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first public presentation under 6.1 of the agenda is Karen and Rick Belin. They are here this evening asking council to consider sending a letter in support of the critical role that the Ontario Independent Facilitation Matters plays. And if council still chooses to support their request, that accordingly a letter be sent to the Ontario Government asking that the government reconsider their decision to cut this program.
Rick and Karen, if you would like to come forward, if you'd like to speak. Who's going to speak? Right here in front, yes. There'll be three, that's fine. There's a button on the panel there. Just press that gray button. And we usually give you five minutes. Okay, so, thank you. You can go ahead. A second. Okay, button's not on. Hold on one sec. Try to side. None? It's still not on. Is it on? No. There it is. Okay, you can go ahead.
All right. I would like to thank the mayor and the council tonight. My name is Karen Belin. I am Dan's mom. He asked me to explain to you what independent facilitation is and what it means to him. About five years or so ago, Marlin, our facilitator, came into our lives. She came and sat at our kitchen table and said, "Dan, tell me about you. Tell me, what are you passionate about? What do you love?" And Dan said, "John Deere, The Red Wings, and my family," in that order. Then she said, "What do you want to do every day? How do you want to spend your life?" Dan said, "I want to work and I want to help people." Then she said, "What are your hopes and dreams?" And Dan said, "I want to live on my own, learn to drive a car, and maybe go to Mexico." From there, we started to build the life Dan wanted. Rick and Dan and I were given challenges through the facilitator to help Dan do -- learn to do laundry, to cook, and to walk along alone to friends and families' houses to be safe in the community. Dan, with the help of his support worker, and Marlin, and us, built what we call a circle of friends, made up of friends and family that Dan knows he can count on. People who are not paid, they volunteer their time. He can lean on these people to teach him. He can ask them questions and depend on them for every aspect of his life. You see, Rick and I won't be here forever, and we need Dan's facilitator to help us teach Dan to count on others and to know they will always be there for him. Our facilitator, Marlin, has been teaching Dan's circle of support how they can help him without doing things for him, but by teaching Dan he can do it himself. Our facilitator, Marlin, has helped Dan find work in our community. He has been cutting grass for ERCA at John R. Park Homestead for four years. He has been volunteering at the Legion in Harrow for over a year. He has been an honorary fireman with the Harrow Station for over 10 years and working at Erica Banwell's even longer. Our facilitator helps Dan become more confident. He feels he is of value to our community. He smiles and looks people in the eye when he talks to them. Even though they may not understand what he is saying, it's okay. He tries even harder to explain it in another way or uses gestures. He did not do that before. Our next step with Dan is to find him a place to move out on his own. Will he need support? Yes. And Marlin will be there to find a safe place for Dan to live and put the proper people in place to ensure Dan's dream becomes a reality. You see, we all want something different in life. We all have hopes and dreams, and some of us need more help than others to make our dreams come true. This is Dan's story. There are 46 others in Essex who want the same, a chance to make their own dreams come true. They want to make their own choice. And there are facilitators out there, loving people, who are giving them the chance to make it happen. Please endorse our cause and tell our government independent facilitation matters.
Hi. Okay? I'm Marlin Sherville, and I'm facilitator and a director at Windsor Essex Brokerage for Personal Supports, sometimes known as Brokerage. And 20 years ago, people and families advocated for Brokerage to become an entity. It was part of a plan that was approved by the government of the day to restructure, to enable people with disabilities and their families to have individualized funding and independent facilitation. And it was about choice. 65% of people and families at that time, still about the same number today, wanted 24-hour support homes through an agency. We were created to work with the 35% of people and families who were looking at change. And this was about support when people said they didn't want to live in a group home or go to a day program. Dan knows what's important to him, that he comes from a grounded, hard-working, loving family, and he wants to figure out his life just like his sisters. He's committed to volunteering, giving back, and being a good citizen in Harrow. He's working and hoping to secure a second job. An investor is interested in helping Dan buy his house in the next year. This is still a road where Dan and his family and others are considered pioneers, still breaking new ground, one person at a time. What I have the honor of and take very seriously is the trust that Dan and his family have in me, that every step Dan takes with the people who love and care about him enables him to continue to achieve his dreams in life as anyone his age. The project money is done March 31st, 2019, and it's been four years. There are 46 people and families who live in the county and 62 city folks who will be done. You saw Heather's story in The Windsor Star, I hope, and she just moved to her own place. And her family are concerned about her independent facilitator not being funded to work with her. It is important for all of us to know that we belong. Love your tagline. Neighbors caring for neighbors, community members welcoming each other, and Dan has all of this.
Do we still have 10 minutes in our 10 minutes? I'm fast.
You're okay. You go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Friesen, and I run an organization of families supporting families that's called Windsor Essex Family Network. I don't live in Essex, unlike the other two. I live in Woodsey, but we do all our business in Essex, and those are our close ties to this town. However, the families that we support are throughout the county and many of them do live in the town of Essex. So I'm here to say that numbers of people with disabilities, their families and their friends, are choosing to live what we call an everyday, ordinary life like the rest of us, without the programs that have been in place for 40 or 50 years, wanting to do it tailored to their choices. But unlike the rest of us, there needs to be some intentional support and help to make that happen. And that's what independent facilitation does for people and their families. Without that, to be challenged and struggle through, people wouldn't often be able to develop the support networks and look into the things that are going on in their communities. I'm here to tell you as an autonomous family-to-family network that there are 600 people who will be affected by this cut because for every person with a disability, their family and their friends and their support network are strengthened as well. So this particular cut isn't just going to cut the 108 people. It's going to affect the other members of their support networks and their families and across the province, because this was a provincial project. It's going to affect more than 8,000 people. So the savings to the community is that people look at life in community instead of looking to more expensive things like a group home or instead of by default ending up in a long-term care facility. And they contribute and they make a difference. And so for every one facilitator, 30 people are helped and their support network and family, which quadruples that or actually makes that times five. So I'm here to say the collective voice of people and families who want a life like Dan has and the support that he has with an independent facilitator goes well beyond one person. And thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. If I can just say one thing, I really appreciate the work that Dan does. I'm involved with the Harrow Legion myself, and he is -- he's a worker. He is a worker, so. And I do agree with you. I don't agree with the cuts the province is coming down with. Is there any questions from council? No questions at all? Counselor Bjorkman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for coming to us. Thanks for sending the letter. I think we all know a family or have family members who have a challenge like this, and to leave people at a time in their life when they're finally making it out on their own is terrible. I think it's just terrible what's happening to this program and other programs like it. So, and I believe this council will definitely receive and support your cause and send a letter. And I think we need to get a hold of our OPP. OPP. OPP last time. Our MPP and, you know, get involved with supporting whatever we can do to put our support behind it, to put our town's name behind it. I was online looking at a -- I'm going to lose it here. So I went to the independentfacilitatematters.com site, and there's just tremendous amount of information there, the surveys, the things. So I would encourage people who are here, encourage people who are, you know, watching this later, to go out and educate themselves a little bit about what this program does for these young adults. It's important. We can't leave people behind. We're a socially progressive country and province, and it's just, it's really not acceptable in my eyes. So thank you again for coming out. I fully support it. And Dan, best to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from council? I think we're going to have to have a motion here to receive this and send a letter. If Counselor Bjorkman, if you'd like to make that motion?
Yes, to receive and send a letter and make sure we include Taras Nadashak on it as well as whatever appropriate minister should be with it.
Right. Thank you very much. As seconder, Deputy Mayor Malash, thank you. Thank you very much for coming out. We really appreciate it. All in favor of the motion? It's Kerry. Thank you very much.
Second. Yep. Just going to wait one minute. There was a lot of people in support. Yep. Do you want -- I was going to bring them up, but also introduce and set up your planning report. Is that fine? Or he wants to talk?
He wants to talk first.
Okay. 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 Well, you can just say we're going to have the second delegation, but we want to hear Mr. Watson's report first.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Next item on the agenda is 6.2. We actually have two -- under public presentations, we actually have two delegates this evening. But before we introduce them, these presentations are in conjunction with the CWAT's project funding request for 2019. And further to that and in conjunction with these presentations is Planning Report 2019-04. That report is before council this evening, looking for council to pre-approve the town's 60% share of the project costs for the extension of the 1.5-meter paved shoulders on County Road 50, together with looking for council to pre-approve funding in the amount of $11,500 to permit the continuance and expansion of services complementary to the CWAT's program. So I believe first of all, our policy planner is looking to speak to that. Mr. Chair?
If you can go. Jeff, you're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Oj says, I'm here to recommend that council endorse and approve a funding for CWAT's initiatives for 2019. And as you know, CWAT stands for the Countywide Active Transportation System. It's a partnership between the various municipalities within the county and the county itself in developing an active transportation system, both physically and promoting its use in a healthy and safety way, safe way. And to the point where we'll have, within 20 years, 750 kilometers of active transportation pathways. But I also want to make an announcement as part of this. The town of Essex has received the bronze designation from the Share the Road Cycling Coalition of Ontario. And who they are, I've given council a summary of that in a separate page, but I just want to quickly read who they are because then you'll understand why that's significant. The Cycling Coalition works in partnership with municipal, provincial, and federal governments, the business community, road and safety organizations, and other nonprofits to enhance access for cyclists on roads and trails, improve safety for all cyclists, educate citizens on the value and importance of safe cycling for healthy lifestyles and healthy communities. They also work in conjunction with many levels of government on active cycling trails and systems. They work on funding them, and they also work on the policies that establish them. So they are a very significant organization. The benefit of all this is, number one, we receive recognition for the efforts that the town has made over the last few years in developing with the county the CWAT's plan and with ERCA as well and other organizations. It also gets the attention of other cycling organizations, as well as cycle tourists, cycle tourist promoters, and people who are active in the promotion and use of bicycles. So it's significant simply because it expands our ability to basically work with cycle tourists, for example. It expands our ability to actually have the resources to enhance our system and to make it more productive for both residents and for visitors. The -- I do want to note that that's a team effort because it's a lot of work to get this recognition. And in my report to council, I have recognized some of the participants, like the directors of community services and planning infrastructure and development, and also some people who are here to speak to the matter today. But I also want to give some credit to some of our own people, Cynthia Cakebread for One, and Richard Bocelé and Al Demirz, Alex Deneville and Nelson. It really takes a team to put the rubber on the road, quite literally. And without the full participation and enthusiasm of the people that basically I work with, this couldn't happen. In terms of what we have to do to get that designation, Share the Road has basically a system or a questionnaire that we have to respond to. And it's evaluated based on three Es: engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation. And just historically, because of our association with CWAT's and the county, most of our activity for the first few years, from 2014 to 2017, was to develop a physical infrastructure. And because, you know, we have four urban communities that we want to tie together. And so over that period, for example, we linked the Chrysler Greenway from Windsor to an active transportation system that now goes all the way to Colchester. So Windsor, Harrow, Colchester are now linked by a system which basically goes down the Greenway, down Erie Street, then down Dunn Road. And Dunn Road was totally a town initiative. It wasn't done with any CWAT's funding and support. So, but by doing that, we have, we literally have a linkage between Lake St. Clair and Lake Erie, and we're connecting the largest urban center to our own urban centers and to our, you know, one of the major significant features of our town, which is Lake Erie and County Road 50. So that's quite significant. We've also developed paved shoulders, as you know, along County Road 50 from Colchester to Oxy right now. And that's also significant because it's part of the waterfront trail system, which extends from literally Belle River all the way to Quebec City. And it's also part of the Carolinian Corridor, you know, to basically talk about the importance of the Carolinian forest system and, you know, to our part of the country. So all of these things were the -- how we sort of got into this, the active transportation process. And it also got us honorable mention in 2018 from Share the Road. To get the bronze recognition, as I said, some of the things that they emphasize are education and encouragement and enforcement, the things that we had not focused on. And for 2018, we did. And through what's called the Municipal Partnership Fund, which is part of CWAT's, we received $10,000 from the county, and the council contributed $10,000. And that was put toward bike rodeo, bike valet. We put nine benches within our AT system and two route maps. You'll see three benches in Colchester, for example, with a route map. So basically what we're doing is providing the soft services and polishing the work that we've done so far. The -- and all of those events were successful, and I think Laurie Newton's here to talk about that because she was a -- she basically helped us in establishing the bike rodeo, for example. In 2018, and this goes to recommendation three of my report, in 2018, or '19, I'm sorry, we want to enhance the soft side. We want to provide services and facilities that basically build on what we've done already. If you go to page five of my report, you'll see a list of the things that we are requesting council to help fund. Those costs, and you can see things like can bike ride with confidence claim for youth and adults, three bike rodeos for children, positive reinforcement initiative with the OPP, where basically OPP officers will see children riding together on their bicycles. If they see one with a helmet, they see one with proper equipment on their bicycles, they will give them a reward, you know, like a gift certificate or something like that, just to acknowledge to both them and to the kids around them that they're doing, they're cycling in a proper manner. The cost of all this would be $23,000, and that would be shared 50/50 between the town and the county. So $11,500 would be the municipal contribution. The other, the most significant request though today is basically the extension of County Road 50 paved shoulders. As I mentioned, they go from Colchester to Oxy now. And the, we have about 3.6, 3.7 kilometers to go to reach our common boundary between Essex and Kingsville. Kingsville, as you may have noticed, has gotten very aggressive in the last few years in building paved shoulders within their system on both County Road 20 and County Road 50, and they're heading in our direction. If they don't reach us this year, they'll certainly reach us next year. And so what I'm recommending to council is rather than do our normal process where we do 1.2 kilometers per year, that we finish the job. We go from Oxy to the Kingsville-Essays border. And the cost, as you can see from the report, is $1.45 million. Under the CWAT's program, the town contributes 60% of that, so 60/40 ratio, which would be $868,000. It's a lot of money, but on the other hand, there's a savings of close to $200,000 by doing it in one as opposed to doing it in three parts as we normally would. The advantage of this is that we have a lot of favorable response from the wineries, from other businesses along County Road 50, and from people, from cycle tourists and from organizations like Windsor Eats, for example, and Farm Dog Cycles, which have, you know, been able to encourage cycle use and cycle activity within our town limits because of the paved shoulders. It just adds a safety, a greater safety factor to people who want to use that. And they want to use it because of the wineries, John R. Park, and a number of other facilities that are there. The other thing that we've done last year was we created the County Road 50 Community Improvement Plan. We're the only municipality in the county that has a rural community improvement program. And the focus, of course, is on things like cycle tourism, where we encourage farmers, for example, to have a secondary business, and it would be partially supported by the CWAT, or sorry, by the CIP funding that council offers. So again, we're building on other initiatives that we've undertaken. And we, from a planning point of view, we feel that getting it done, getting it done now, is basically, is extremely proactive. And I think in the long run, it helps to us to augment the recognition we've got through things like Share the Road bronze designation. So that's what I have to say today.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for your report.
So through you, Mr. Chair. We have two delegates this evening in conjunction of this matter. I was going to introduce them both right now. Our first is Megan Balsili. She represents a group of business owners in the County Road 50 area. She's here to speak to council about the impact and importance of cycling infrastructure on businesses from a tourism standpoint and to encourage further development of bike lanes. And our second delegate is Laurie Newton from Bike Windsor Essex, and she's here to speak to council this evening on Bike Windsor Essex proposed partnering to deliver cycling education for the residents of Essex, all as part of the CWAT's project funding request.
Thank you, Rob. If you'd like to come forward and do your presentation, please. And thank you. And you both have, we usually say five minutes. Okay? Thank you. Anytime, just press that button for your mic there. Okay? for the residents of Essex, all as part of the SEWAT's project funding request.
Thank you, Rob. If you'd like to come forward and do your presentation, please. And thank you, and you both have, we usually say five minutes. Okay? Thank you. Anytime, just press that button for your mic there. Okay?
Better? Okay. Let me start over. Your worship and councilors, I just want to say I was really glad that Jeff spoke first just to give a little bit more context to what I'm about to say. My name's Megan Bousaly, and I wanted to come today to ensure that the voice of tourism operators in their many different capacities on County Road 50, and that the economic importance of cycling and the infrastructure that supports vibrant cycling communities is recognized when you're considering SEWAT's contributions for the 2019 year. Earlier this year, I spoke to some of our partner businesses and neighbors and friends along County Road 50, and a number of them offered letters of support, which have been provided to you tonight, and I just want to thank them for continuing to be a part of the larger cycling tourism team. I, along with them, would like to encourage you to move forward and to fill that gap by connecting the Essex portion of the bike lanes on County Road 50 to meet Kingsville at the Arner Town Line as soon as possible. I own and operate Farm Dog Cycles with my partner Liam Brennan, and in addition to that, we are avid cyclists ourselves, and we are residents and property owners on County Road 50. Farm Dog Cycles has operated at its current location on County Road 50, where between the southern terminus of the Ridge Road and the Isla Road, so just west of Oxley, since the summer of 2012. So we're currently preparing for our eighth season, providing wine tours by bike and bicycle rentals, and we primarily service the epic wine region from Colchester to the Arner. Our business has grown steadily every year we've been open, and our patrons are a mix of Windsor Essex residents experiencing the region through day trips, staycations, and out-of-town visitors, but all of them are tourists. They're acting like tourists, so we call them tourists. Our tours now cover a mix of terrain, which includes secondary roads like Huffman Road and Isla Road, trails, bike lanes, and sections of County Road 50 currently without bike lanes. So we have a mix. Our customers frequently comment on how much more comfortable it is to ride on the bike lanes, and when I say bike lanes, I am referring to the paved shoulders. To them, it feels safer, they're able to more relax, and it just provides an overall better experience to them. The bike lanes on County Road 50 have been a boon to our business since we opened. The second part of this I just want to identify because it represents a big shift in the last year or two, and that is that many of our customers plan their visits to the region around doing one of our tours. And last year, we noticed a huge jump in the number of patrons coming in from the GTA. These customers are younger than our typical demographic, and they are looking for new places to explore. To me, that says we are gaining a reputation as an exciting, unexplored place to visit. In addition, most of them plan to spend the weekend, and they book accommodation right in Kingsville or in the municipality of Essex, in Colchester or along the shore. They're not staying in Windsor and coming down for the afternoon before returning to the city. Completing the bike lanes from Bell Road to Arner Town Line connects a loop, completed cycling network infrastructure all the way to Leamington. It will give tourists an easy way to get to Essex, to access tourism attractions within our municipality. We are here, and we're not only ready for business, but we're already doing it. You could compare it to not having a bus stop in front of the CN Tower. It's here, it's ready, but you can't quite get to us. Completing this really is, it's a finishing piece on what we see as our, our destination and what we have to offer. So thank you very much for your time.
Lori, whenever you're ready.
My name is Lori Newton, and I'm the executive director of Bike Windsor Essex. We're a cycling, education, and advocacy group that is physically located in Windsor, but actually the county has been so friendly with cycling that we do an awful lot of our work out here in the county. We, we really work on encouraging municipalities to create safer streets for all vulnerable road users. On behalf of Bike Windsor Essex and as a board member of the Ontario Share the Road Cycling Coalition, I would like to extend my extreme congratulations on your achievement of the bronze, bronze bike friendly designation. It's not an easy designation to get. The paperwork is onerous. The hoops you have to jump through are tremendously challenging. So good for you for having the vision and the ongoing investment in your cycling infrastructure in this region. The, sorry, we believe that riding a bicycle like swimming is an essential life skill. And so our organization is proud to be partnering with your planning and recreation departments to provide safe cycling education for your staff and community residents, including the children who will learn safe cycling during your bike rodeos. We did our first one last year. We had a fabulous time. Kids learn so much. They get fitted with helmets. They practice their skills. They go through obstacle courses, and then they just feel like superstars at the end, and they can go home and tell their parents how they're supposed to be riding their bicycles safely on the infrastructure that you're already building. We were extremely impressed to learn that you actually have a fleet of bicycles for children to use during your summer camps. I don't believe there is another community in the region that has made that investment and that offers that to their residents. So again, kudos to you for the work that you've done because you can build the infrastructure, but then you have to educate the community on how to use it safely and properly. Although I do reside in Windsor, like so many residents from across the region, I can think of no better way to spend a Sunday afternoon than coming out here. Sometimes we take the Chrysler Greenway and riding our bicycles from winery to winery, enjoying not only the wine, which we enjoy, but also the scenery, the flat landscape, and the beautiful views everywhere you look. I mean, it's marvelous. It's the go-to thing that we do whenever we have guests. We have, we have company from across the province. We have company from Europe. There's no question that one thing we're going to do while they're here is come out to the county, particularly Essex, and ride through, through the beautiful landscapes and the trails and the protected, the paved shoulders that you have. And so connecting, as Megan was speaking to, connecting your infrastructure to the infrastructure in Kingsville is vital to ensure that people who are riding bicycles have a continuous, safe, predictable route to take, and you will continue to attract more cycling tourists here, which is a booming, booming opportunity for this region. And that connected paved, paved shoulders network is going to make this really an attractive place to be even more than it is today. So congratulations again on your achievement with your bronze bike friendly community. I hope maybe I see a couple of you at the Share the Road Ontario Bike Summit in April. But in the meantime, I urge you to continue to do the great work that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is there any questions from council at all? Could I have a motion to receive the report from Jeff, please? Jeff Watson? And, and to move the, and receive the presentation? Yeah. Move the recommendation and receive the report from Jeff Watson. Move it. Secondary. Any questions? Councilor Verbeek.
Through you, your worship. I just want to thank Jeff for the report. I, I read it, and I was, I was really excited to know before I got here. I was pretty certain that I was going to support the recommendations, not just because of the $200,000 savings, which jumped out, of course. But, you know, last year, I first learned about this growing bike tourism thing that I really didn't know about. My aunt and uncle in their 60s came down here with their bicycles to do our wine, to tour our wineries on their bicycles, and they were telling me how fabulous it is and that they've been doing it across the province for a while now. And two, I read the letters, I read the letters in our package from the businesses asking for our support, and that's what we, we keep claiming to want to do, is support our businesses, and they're asking for our support in this. So I certainly will be.
Through the chair, why are we doing this now before the, the rest of the budget? I mean, as much as I support bike lanes, there's going to be a, a lot of contentious projects all at once vying for funding, so why is this one separate from the rest of the budget?
Jeff, can you respond to that, please?
Through, Mr. Mayor, we are on a very tight schedule with the county. They have to have our response this, this week, basically, so that we convey that to them, and they can establish the tender process and that sort of thing for getting the works done. They, they have to take the matter to county council very shortly.
If I may, this is, this is just for pre-approval. It still has to go to budget, counselor. So it still has to be passed a budget.
Through the chair, pre-approval would mean that it's already approved within the 2019 budget. So it, it would show up in the budget document and presentation, but it would be pre-approved as an expenditure.
Well, I, I still wonder why this is getting such a big jump. I mean, as we just were told in the procurement, procurement training, sometimes it isn't worth it to spend more to save money. Like, from what I understand, it's a very tight budget, and we've got, we're already looking at a, at a tax increase. So committing this much in advance is a lump. And, okay, so we're saving $200,000, but, and it's great to get it all done in a lump, but it looks like Kingsville isn't going to be there at County Road 23 when we get there. So with, given all the extra pressures on the budget, maybe it's worth spending $200,000 more and delaying this a year so that, I mean, I don't know. I haven't seen the rest of the budget, so I don't know what I'm trading off here.
Thank you, counselor. To Jeff again?
Through the chair, this specific project is fully funded, so it has a net zero bottom line, so it's not being funded through taxation. $260,000 would come from gas tax, which is an eligible expenditure for these amounts, and then $174,000 each year would come from the asset management reserve. So that funding would come out, whether it was spent in this year, next year, or the following year. That reserve is healthy, so we can upfront the amounts over a two-year period rather than a three-year period. The cost estimates, they're about $350,000 we spend each year. The budgeted amount is actually $400,000 we budget each year. So we have significant savings by doing it this way, and then we have the balance of $111,000 coming from contingency reserve, which is for climate change initiatives, which this would fall within. So it's, like I said, it's a fully funded project with a net zero bottom line.
Thank you. If I can just say one thing myself. I, I do support it. I support it for a reason. We do have some big seasonal campgrounds there, like Epping Forest is one. I don't know how many campers they have in there, but if this trail system went through, I'm sure it's going to benefit all the wineries, all the businesses along that, that highway, right into Colchester. So I, I do support it. So any other questions? Counselor Beartman.
Thank you, through your worship. Yes, I, I support this. In our, in our five-year budget, when we look at going forward, we've got a budget line, $400,000 each year for trails and paving shoulders. We use that every year. This, this savings actually puts us ahead of our budget. It's areas that we expect to spend money. It's just that we're going to do it all at once now in order to have that savings. And I, to me, that's, right there is a win. But I'd like to go back to Share the Road. Last year, Mr. Nepsey and myself went to the Share the Road conference, and it was great. It was the first time I'd been there. John Scott, a previous counselor on this council, was a huge backer of the, the bike trails and the biking community and really got us going with this. So it's just, this is, this is a project that's been coming and coming. We actually had it on projects for the town of Essex, leading up to 2018, 2019. One of them was work with neighboring communities and the county to fund and finish County Road 50 shoulders. So it's not new. It's, it's kind of, it's, we're rushed for the money right now as they're coming to us as, you know, we need to do this. With the election year, we didn't have our budget when we normally would have had it. So some of those things are kind of coming together, but it's not, it's not something we didn't see coming. It's not something we haven't planned for. It's not something that we haven't been moving in that direction of. And then, you know, bottom lines to save that funds. As far as the $20,000, $23,000 that we're going to spend on the, on the soft items, that's really where we are next. We don't have repair stations along our trails. We don't have, we had, we had a bike rodeo at the Fun Day out in Colchester last year, and it was great. Kids loved it. It was great information for them and, and ways to get them involved and get them safely using their, their equipment. So all of these things really work together to benefit all along our shore. And then not just our shore, but our shore is connected by trails right into Essex Center. So this is something everybody gets to use. So I will be supporting it.
Thank you through you, your worship. As Counselor Vanderdolen pointed out, I'm not usually a fan of pre-approvals, but I do know that the county is pressuring to have all of the plans in from all the various municipalities to, to know what, how they can allocate their money. They're only going to allocate so much money this year at county level, and if we can jump in there at this point in time, we can be assured that it, that it will get done. And that's, that's the reason why we need pre-approval on this, I believe, because I've asked the same question. I'm in support of this, and I think this was a long-term goal that we had for our tourism plan for that area. And because of the savings that we're going to encounter by doing the plan just a little bit further ahead, it was actually a three-year plan to get done what we're doing right now, but we're going to try and do it in two years. I think it'll elevate us that much quicker to where we want to be with the tourism aspect. And bicycling, like, we haven't had the presentation recently, but it may be worthwhile in this new term of council to have a presentation from, from a bicycling association to let us know what kind of dollars are out there with bicycling tourism. It's huge. If we can start attracting those people and with more laneways that we have for bicycling and particularly with the beautiful country that we have down there, as pointed out, with the wineries there, it, it all plays into this tourism aspect that we want to, that we want to develop down there. So I'm in favor of, of, I've been in favor all along of, of the bike lanes to promote tourism and promote safety in the, in the community as well, obviously, but I'm okay with moving this ahead this year. I, I agree with what our administration is recommending here, so I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other councilors? Counselor Guerin? No? Counselor Bowman? No? Okay. So all in favor of the recommendation? We had a mover in the secondary. All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you.
Chris?
Through your worship, I just wanted to add one thing. I know Jeff passed a lot of accolades around to a lot of staff and, and council, and, you know, Ms. Newton said thanks to him, but really, these things don't happen without champions on staff. You need those people to, to go through that paperwork, to find the things that need to get done, to connect the people that need to get them done. So a, a special thanks to Jeff and, and for doing that, because without him, we wouldn't have that, that bronze, so.
Thank you. Yes, we, we're really grateful for that, even with the public. The public, we want to thank them too for pushing, pushing this project forward. We really appreciate it. Thank you. So Bowman?
I know without a staff, it wouldn't have happened either, but former councillor John Scott probably was the first one on the bandwagon, probably eight years ago, and it's sort of coming to fruition now. Too bad he's not around to see it, but anyway.
Thank you.
Six-point, sorry, 8.1 on the agenda, reports from administration. Fire and rescue services, report 2019-001. That said, report- That said report, providing council with an update regarding the 2019 simplified risk assessment, be received.
Have a motion, receive it. Counselor Guerin, seconder, receive it. Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry, thank you.
8.2 is Community Services, 2019-003. Re-Prime Consultant Services for New Fire Station Two. That said report be received, and that council approves the request for proposal for Prime Consultant Services for New Fire Station Two to be awarded to Architecture, Architectura Inc., Architects, in the amount of $105,830, including applicable taxes.
Thank you. Through your worship, to the Chief, could you just tell us, like, what's the scope of work here? This is a pretty hefty bill for a consultant, so I'm just wondering if you can just explain what the scope is here and what we're receiving for that.
Through your worship, Counselor Bjorkman, what we're looking at is this architect's going to help us to design the new fire station at Station Two on the applicable land that we've already purchased, and we're going to go through the complete design with them. We're going to get a steering committee from the station to help us design the facility to make sure that it meets all the needs of the fire station. What we've, in the proposal that we sent out, it has the basic designs of, you know, three bays and the fire, and we're going to go through all that and make sure that we get what we need to house our fire station for the next 50 years at Station Two.
Counselor Bjorkman, further?
So, yes, so just for that, so we're looking at, from this, we're going to get a ready-to-build document.
Through your worship, yes, the consultants will come up with a plan and a design for the building for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Arnell, just wondering if you'd have an idea of what the timeline is to have this all done and have the consultant in, like, to start presentations and so on to council? What are you expecting? What do you think the picture looks like?
Through your worship, right now, we'll have to, we'll let them know that they have been selected, then we've got to set up some meetings, but I know in their, we had a presentation from them about two weeks ago, and they're set and ready to go. What they, they have the availability of doing a 3D mock, and they can do it online, show you everything they're doing, and we're going to go from there, and they're hoping to be able to get the designs and get going and look at, maybe summertime, start working towards having this come to fruition. So it can be anywhere, you know, the whole project, we're talking probably 400 to 450 days before we can have a building, so. But we're hoping to get started with them and get a steering committee together and get the fire stations input, the crews, so they understand and know what they're getting, and we can all be on the same page when we get the building built.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other questions? All in favor? The motion? Kerry.
Thank you, Chief. 8.3, CAO Report, 2019-03. Re-amendments to the procedural bylaw for delegations, this together with bylaw 1784, to amend 1681, which sets out rules of procedure for the conduct of meetings. Said report for receipt, and that bylaw 1784 received three ratings this evening.
I have a mover, Counselor Verbeek, seconder, Counselor Bowman. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry.
8.4, Corporate Services, 2019-01. Retax adjustments under Section 357.1 and 358 of the Municipal Act, for receipt this evening?
Mover, Deputy Mayor Malash, seconder, Counselor Bjorkman. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry.
And 8.5, Communications, 2019-01. Re-2018 Communication Summary, for receipt by council this evening?
Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Guerin, any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry. We'll do all these.
The correspondence, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do all the correspondence together.
11.1, Correspondents for receipt, that the correspondence so listed in Agenda Item 11.1 be received, and we're indicated to further share with the community using suitable methods of communication.
If they want to speak to any of the council, we should. Mover on that one? Counselor Bowman? And Counselor Verbeek? All in favor of that one? Kerry.
11.2.1, Cohen Park Recreation Committee. Re-offers to sit as members of the Cohen Park Committee, that said correspondence be received and supported, and that Chris McEggy and Jonathan Little be appointed to the Cohen Park Committee, and that bylaw 1777, or Schedule 8 to bylaw 1777, be updated accordingly.
Motion received. Counselor Van Der Owen and Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry.
Thanks. 11.2.2 is Correspondents from the municipality of Matisse-Valkote. Re-council resolution, declaration of office, that said correspondence be received or received and supported, and if council chooses to support, that the letter of support, the appropriate letter of support be sent to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, the Premier, and the township of Matisse-Valkote.
Received by Counselor Van Der Owen, seconder?
For receipt?
For receipt. Just receive. And Counselor Bjorkman. Any questions on it? All in favor? Kerry.
11.2.3 is Correspondents from the County of Essex. Re-request to support Swift's position, that said correspondence either be received or received and supported, and if council chooses to support the county's request, that letter supporting Swift's appeal be sent to the CRTC and to the federal government.
Receive and, receive it? Just receive, or? Okay, Counselor Verbeek, seconder?
I'm sorry, receiver, receiving?
Receiving, support, yeah. Counselor Van Der Owen. All in favor? Oh, question? Yep.
Actually, I have a question, though, through the Chair. Can somebody from County Council tell us what chances this has of actually coming to fruition? What are the chances of us actually getting some money?
Deputy Mayor, you can speak on that one.
Yeah, it's just putting it out there. It is a waste.
Yeah, it's a waste. Quite a waste down there.
They've had, they've had some money given to them, but they've changed the rules as to how the money's being handed out. And what this letter's going to do is to say, no, you need to go back to those original rules that we passed as communities across southwestern Ontario, and free up some of this money so the communities can start putting in some high fiber and so on.
I just want to add that, you know, this is crucial to thousands of our residents who don't, haven't had access, they haven't had as good an access to broadband internet as people in Red Lake, Ontario. A friend of mine who installs fiber for a living told me he recently helped install fiber that went 10 miles down a logging road, and there's three houses on it, and they spent over a million dollars on that line. And meanwhile, we've got like 20, 30,000 people, where people can't, won't buy houses in our community because they can't get good internet, people won't locate businesses here because they can't get good, can't get good internet. We need this, and they've basically been, like, as you say, they've changed the rules. They've yooked us out of the money. The money's being spent elsewhere on far fewer people, and we need to reinvent our economy almost more than anyone right now. So I just want to underline the importance of this. Also, there are a number of companies who are interested in perhaps improving service around here and maybe investing. This might speed it along if there was some of that money available. For instance, I know $45 million was just spent between Peterborough and Kingston. I guess they had access to the money and we didn't. Anyway, let's hope this goes through.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions from council? All in favor? Kerry.
Item 12, Committee Meeting Minutes. That the minutes listed in Agenda Item 12.1 to 12.4, together with the recommendations noted therein, be received, approved, and adopted as circulated.
Moving, Counselor Bjorkman, seconder, Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry.
Item 15.1, the following notice of motion was presented at the January 14, 2019 regular council meeting, and is now being brought forward for consideration this evening. As moved by Mayor Snively, that administration provide periodic verbal and/or written reports providing updates to council on the status of various ongoing development matters or projects in the Town of Essex. Need a seconder?
I have a, I got to take my seat. Richard, you're going to have to, you're going to have to, okay. Speak on my behalf. Kerry, want that?
No, I don't want any. Moved by Counselor Snively, supported by Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor? Do you want to speak on that?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The reason I'm bringing this forward, okay, I know as myself, being on council, I do have a lot of questions, a lot of people inquire, what projects are going ahead in our municipality? They would like to know, you know, which subdivisions are going through any type of development. They want to know, okay? And what I'm asking council, what I'm asking council to authorize administrative staff, I talked to Chris on this already, if we could have, like, a quarterly, quarterly verbal report from Chris, exactly the stuff that's moving ahead for sure, you know what I'm saying? We don't want to hear about everybody that put an application in for rezoning or, we want to know what is exactly happening in our municipality, so we can tell the public, like, we know as council what's going on, but the public doesn't understand. So that's what I'm asking council, if they would authorize administration to come back about every four months and just give us an update on the things that are going through our municipality. Different subdivisions that's been approved, and everything's clear to go, and any kind of development, a business or anything like that. That's what I'm asking administration to do, and I'm asking council to support it. So if anybody would like to speak on that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I understand what you're asking for there, Mr. Mayor, and I second it, or I agree with it. What we're looking for, I think, is, there's a lot of things that are going on that are happening where we're not really sure what we can say when we're in public, and we need, we all understand, we need to be very careful with what we're using. So although there are developments going, there's a certain pace that they're going at that maybe is not for us to say yet, so when somebody asks, you're just going to go, "I'll ask about that, I'm not sure what I can tell you." So I do like the idea of that, of making that a public thing, that we're all, we've got good grounding in what we can or can't say or should be speaking to, and if we've got the backing of it, it was spoken of in public at a meeting. We know very well that that's a good thing for us to talk to, so I agree with that.
Thank you, Counselor Bjorkman. Counselor Verbeek?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. My question to you, Mr. Mayor, would perhaps the format for that be at the round tables that we're proposing to have in the, like, quarterly with administration and council? Would that suffice?
Through the Chair, if I can answer that. No, because at a round table discussion, we're discussing it between us. This is a verbal report that would come in front of an open council meeting to the public and to the media, saying, this is what's, this is what's going through, this is approved, the shovel's in the ground, this is being built. That's what I want the public to know. So that's what it's all about. And I'm not asking for a written report, I'm asking for a verbal report, like, if Chris come back and said, yes, this is going on, this subdivision is definitely a go, or this industrial development is a go, that's what I, that's what I want the public to know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Counselor Van Der Owen? I think it's a great idea, and I support it. I'm glad it's verbal, for Mr. Nepsey's sake. But even, if there's one decent one to report every two months, I'd even, even every two months. I mean, it's a positive thing, this builds confidence in the town, and people want to hear something's going on. So, like, if it was only just one project every two months, I think it would be worth doing every two months. Any further questions from council? Oh, sorry. Mr. Nepsey?
Through your Chair. The Mayor and I did talk about this, and we were trying to get across what, the exact intent of what he was looking for. I mean, sometimes with developments, and you've been through this, they can stagnate or lag because of various things, right? Stormwater management issues, those types of things. So there's nothing worse than, I think, coming too often, maybe, and then having to repeat the same thing, oh, they're still waiting for this approval, or we're waiting for this agency. So, you know, Donna and administration have been actively trying to keep council involved in everything, so anything that comes up, you know, within that period, obviously you're going to know about it. It's more, I think the Mayor's looking for more of letting the public know that these things are happening, or the various stages of them. So, you know, sometimes you might hear a repeat, but we'll try and bring, you know, if we start booming, where we have to bring it every two months, absolutely, then we'll do that. But I think for now, I think quarterly is probably a fair start.
Okay, thank you. Any, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The Deputy Mayor and myself, we've been working on different projects, eh? And that's not what I want. I don't want to tell the public, we're working on this, working on this. I want, I want the finished product. That's what I'm looking for. Like, Deputy Mayor Malash and myself, we've been meeting with different developers and that, but that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for the finished product, so, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, then? It's carried unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Item 16, any reports and announcements from council members this evening?
That's been canceled, so just to give you a heads up, okay?
Nothing from me, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Guerin. Yeah, lots of businesses from Essex and points of interest and events were recently nominated by Tourism Windsor Essex Pele Island. I want to touch, I don't want to touch on all of them, but I'm involved with the Essex Fun Fest. The Herald Fair was also nominated as, this is a top-five festivals, fairs, local. I think it's a great accomplishment, so we're in the top five. The voting on that is online, bestofwindsoressex.ca, and it closes on February the 24th. So if you think your Essex Fun Fest deserves to be the best and not just the top five, then get online and vote.
Thank you. Counselor Verbeek, anything tonight?
Yeah, Mayor Snively asked me to give a little quick briefing on my visit to Roma. I was able to attend Roma on behalf of Essex last week, and it was really educational for me. It was a really good building block for my role in municipal government, and I was able to connect with and form some deeper relationships with several elected officials in our neighboring communities. There were really good presenters. Each of them had some takeaways. The leaders from all four of our par- officials in our neighboring communities. Uh, they were really good presenters. Um, each of them had some takeaways. Uh, the leaders from all four of our parties, um, addressed us. Um, Premier Doug Ford, um, and the leader of the opposition Andrea Horvath made all kinds of promises, um, to work with the municipalities. Um, uh, Premier Ford announced that the province will be launching a joint and several liability review, which, um, liability re- um, reform represents a longstanding municipal request. It was back in 2014 that, um, that the request was, was made and passed by, um, all MPPs from all parties. Um, I had a meeting with our Minister of, um, Corrections and Safety, uh, the Honorable Sylvia Jones. It went pretty well. Uh, it was, um, it was just more about, um, beginning a working relationship and it was pretty successful. Uh, 5G broadband was, uh, demanded by or promised by almost every single speaker. Speakers from the government were promising it, other speakers were, um, demanding it, you know? Uh, everybody agreed that the national broadband strategy is, is a must, right? And, uh, I had a few, a few good take homes. Uh, there's some action items I have that I'm going to address with administration, also a few things I, I have to talk to fellow councillors about. Um, some of my, my take homes were, you know, zero waste festivals. I want to look at how, how that can be done. Um, staying, the importance of staying connected with our community, um, and leading with love. Um, I have some, some new connections to, uh, to learn from and where I now, new, new connections to make inquiries about as needed. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to have attended Roma on, uh, as, the behalf of Essex Council.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Verbeek, and thank you for representing us very well down there. Thank you. Counselor Bjorkman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had our first meeting for the, the Heritage Committee and, uh, we are, uh, accepting nominations for a heritage award. Um, the town is currently accepting nomination for the Community Heritage Preservation Award. The award will be presented to two individuals, to organizations or organizations during Heritage Week and they'll be posted Tuesday, March 5th, Essex.ca. So your nominations can be sent, um, to Rita Jabor, uh, in, uh, Development, I'm going to lose, uh, lose my, my words here, uh, but she's at rachabor@essex.ca. Um, submissions may also be received in person at Town Hall and the nomination period ends on Tuesday, February 11th. So Heritage Week is coming up quickly, so we didn't have a lot of time to get that information out. It's on the, on the webpage, on the town Facebook page. Uh, so if you know of somebody who's worthy of a Heritage Award, please, uh, put their name forward. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor.
17.1 Bylaws for third and final reading this evening. 1774 to confirm the proceedings from the January 14th regular council meeting.
Mover, uh, Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Bjorkman, all in favor?
17.2 Bylaws for three readings. 1779 to authorize the execution of an agreement between Her Majesty the Queen and the Rite of Ontario, as represented by the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services and the Corporation of the Town of Essex for the provision of police services under section 10 of the Police Services Act.
Have a mover, Deputy Mayor Malash. Seconder, Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? No, all in favor? Kerry.
Bylaw 1782 to authorize an agreement between Her Majesty the Queen and the Rite of Ontario, as represented by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and the Town of Essex, and this in relation to the National Disaster Mitigation Program.
Have a mover, uh, Counselor Guerin and Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry.
1783 to authorize the execution of an agreement for an integrity commissioner between the town and Robert Swayze, barrister and solicitor.
Have a mover? Moved by Counselor Bjorkman, uh, and Counselor Van Der Dolen. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Kerry.
And for two readings this evening, 1785 to confirm the proceedings of this February 4th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Mover, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Bowman, all in favor? Kerry, and could I have a motion to adjourn? Deputy Mayor Malash, Counselor Guerin, all in favor? Thanks council and thanks for, for the support and thanks for administrative staff for their work.